We will call the school committee meeting public speak out to order. And before we start, I would like to ask attorney, school committee attorney Melinda Phelps, for clarification on a potential topic that might come up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There have been 11 individuals that signed up for public speak out to talk about their own mental health issues, and that was the description that was provided. Springfield Public Schools and the Springfield School Committee cannot provide a public forum for minor students to speak about their own or other students' mental health issues, absent specific written parental consent. The right to disclose a minor's mental or physical health information belongs solely to the custodial parent. And without authorization or consent from the custodial parent, that information regarding mental health and physical health cannot be disclosed by a minor student. So in this instance, I have not received any parental specific written consent for disclosure from their student of confidential health and mental health information. And therefore, it is my opinion to the school committee that the district and school committee should not provide a forum for a minor child to disclose confidential mental health student record information under FERPA and 603 Code of Mass Regulations 23, which protects the confidentiality of student records.
Thank you, Attorney Phelps. And again, in this, in no way does this cause, if the student or family member needs assistance, we want to be able to assist that student through Superintendent Dan Warwick and his staff. So that's paramount to us, if the student or family member needs assistance. But again, we've received legal clarification from school committee attorney Mindy Phelps. But rest assured, the whole school committee and Superintendent Warwick, if a student is in need of services, we will work very hard to get those services to that student, working through the parent, custodial parent on that. So with that, and I also want to make note that for the record, school committee Vice Chair Naylor, Latonya Naylor, and school committee men Josiah Gonzalez are at a portrait of graduate, they're at that conference representing us there, so I believe they're going to be queuing in virtually. So with that, I will call the public speak out to order. And first, we have listed here Tara Parrish.
So am I, am I in here?
Yes, Ms. Parrish.
I'm not signed up to speak tonight, so I'm going to defer to those who've signed up to speak tonight, but I never signed up to speak at tonight's meeting.
You were listed as a speaker. Yeah, we're in introduction, and again-
I'm not, I'm not a speaker, I didn't sign up to be a speaker, so I shouldn't be listed as a speaker.
And again, I don't know-
There are people who did sign up, but I did not sign up.
Okay, Ms. Parrish, thank you, but we, I don't know if you heard our clarification that was by our city, our school committee attorney, Melinda Phelps. Did you hear that clarification on this subject? Ms. Parrish, again, did you hear that clarification?
I'm sorry, the phone that I'm on, I can't really hear well. So I, I heard, and I think everyone who signed up to speak heard the qualification and clarification, and I think they, they're signed up to speak, so I think it's probably prudent to call their names and, but I'm not signed up to speak, and I'm not speaking on their behalf.
Okay, again, but the point again, is there parental consent, that we have not received any parental consent for any of these individuals to speak, and this is very sensitive subjects. And of course, if any of the individuals need assistance, we want to make sure that they gain the proper assistance that they need. So this is sensitive-
That's understood, and again, my understanding is that you're going to call the names of the people that have signed up to speak tonight, and, and they will give their testimony.
Once again, Ms. Parrish, we have not received any parental, parental, Attorney Phelps, if you can clarify, please.
Excuse me, I, I have parental consent, I have written parental consent.
We have no written parental, go ahead, Attorney Phelps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there, absent specific written parental consent for a minor student to disclose mental health or medical information, the school committee should not be providing a public forum for that to happen, absent written parental consent. And there was a term used by Ms. Parrish of testifying, this is not a forum for testifying, this is a public speak out, which is controlled by rules of this school committee.
And again, we have not received anything in writing, and this is not only for the protection of the students here, and I want to reiterate that, we want to be able to assist any and all students of the Springfield Public School System that need the assistance through Superintendent Warwick and his team. But again, we are being advised by our school committee attorney, because of the sensitive nature of this topic, that we have not received anything in writing about a parent or custodial parent or guardian allowing these individuals to speak, many are who are of, under the age of 18, am I correct? And we're just following the law-
Correct, about their own mental health issues.
About their own mental health issues.
Talking about a national issue-
That's not actually accurate, Attorney Phelps, I would appreciate it if you would describe this accurately.
Well, Ms. Parrish, there probably, it is probably a better venue, probably a better venue to help, if these individuals need assistance, to get them the assistance.
They're here to give, give their testimony at a public speak out, it's an appropriate forum for such, they're not disclosing health, health records information, therefore, nothing that they are disclosing in their testimony has anything to do with any medical diagnosis. If so, they have specific written parental consent, so we simply ask that their First Amendment rights be protected in this forum, and that they be allowed to give testimony according to the law-
Ms. Parrish, again, our attorney has advised us, we have not received any parental, any parental-
Which reserves the right for them to give public speak out testimony in this forum.
Ms. Parrish, once again, we have not received any parental okays from these individuals.
It's not required that you receive any specific written consent-
Yes, it is, Ms. Parrish. Attorney Phelps, could you please?
For people to give testimony, including minors, if they're not disclosing any information about their health records. So therefore, this does not apply. In the case in which someone is suggesting that they would like to name a medical diagnosis, that individual has specific parental consent. I can email it to you right now from the parent, if you would so prefer. However, if they're not discussing their public health records, you do not have the right to deny them, their opportunity to speak in this forum.
Nobody's looking to deny anybody their rights, we want to make sure the appropriate assistance comes to these stu-, to these students, to these, to these students-
Everyone is sure, everyone here is sure that they are not talking about a medical diagnosis, and therefore, they have the right to speak at this speak out in this forum.
Okay, I will call the first speaker, but again, we are under strict guidelines, Attorney Phelps, go ahead.
So I know Ms. Parrish just offered to send by email written specific parental consents, and I would appreciate that, so I can review them.
So we will take, we will take a two-minute or one-minute recess. Ms. Parrish, please send those parental consent to, via email, to the appropriate, our attorney, to make sure, again, the bottom line here is, if a student, a Springfield Public School student needs assistance, we want to be able to help out that student and, and family member, and do it in a proper venue where it does not cause any type of issues. So we'll take a two-minute, a two-minute recess-
Absolutely, but as I said, there was only one student who intends to speak about a political, about a particular diagnosis.
We will take a two-minute recess, and please send those parental okays and guidance to our school committee attorney. Thank you very much, two-minute recess, thank you. Brendan, we're set to go. Thank you very much, we have received parental consent for Olivia Stack. I must ask the question, as we do in public speak out, first of all, in her purview is Springfield Public Schools. Ms. Stack, are you a, currently a Springfield Public School student? And we also, on public speak out residential address, please.
I'm not currently a Springfield Public School student, but I do live in Springfield.
Okay, if you're, if you're, if you're not a Springfield Public School student, that doesn't come, doesn't come under our purview, dear. Attorney Phelps, could you clarify?
I'm a Spring, I'm a Springfield resident, I have a right to speak at the public speak out.
Okay. Attorney Phelps, could you clarify that?
Sure.
Because this is listed here, and if it is, that's fine.
So the public speak out addresses issues that are within the purview of the Springfield School Committee. By the fact that Ms. Stack is not a student in the Springfield Public Schools, the school committee has no role to play with regards to any issues of Ms. Stack.
Well, actually, though it may not affect me, it affects the people behind me very much, and I'm advocating as a mentally ill person, on behalf of them getting mental health resources. And my voice is important to this conversation, I live in Springfield, I have my entire life. And I know you, Mayor Sarno, I know you know who I am. I have a right to speak, and you will hear me speak, one way or another.
Ms. Stack, go right ahead, hello to your parents also, we just want to make sure, we're trying to file and follow the proper legalities to make sure everybody's protected, and more importantly, if assistance or help is needed, that's our main priority. So you have a couple of minutes, Olivia, Ms. Stack, to speak, and you can go right ahead, dear.
Right, I'd like to share that I have been given specific consent to share my testimony by my mother today.
Yes.
And, and they, Ms. Parrish just sent you that email, you have the text message.
Yes, I noted that.
As you have already heard, my name is Liv Stack, I'm 15, I use any pronouns, and I live in 16 Acres, and I am here to advocate for mental health services for Springfield Public Schools, on behalf of the Pioneer Valley Project. I have struggled with situational and/or clinical depression since I was seven, I have seen a therapist on and off for most of my life, and last year I was put on Lexapro, which is an antidepressant, at the suggestion of my therapist and my med provider. I have also, I also have premenstrual dysphoric disorder, or P M D D. P M D D is characterized by many symptoms, including severe cramps and bleeding, mood swings, and depression, and suicidal ideation before and at the onset of the menses, and it will resolve when the period is over. I can be completely fine one day, perhaps I ain't even thriving, and in the next day I will be suicidal, I will shoot hurt myself, and I have no idea why. This is something that I would not wish on anyone in this entire world. However, I have a support system that includes friends, family, and trained medical professionals, including my therapist, my med provider, and my OBGYN, who I just talked to this morning. I have also been prescribed special birth control pills for those with reproductive health disorders, to allow my hormones to be level and to skip my period, which is viable in, in preventing the depression from P M D D. Children and teens, including those behind me today, deserve access to these resources. So I implore the school committee to meet with myself and the other teens here today, so we can discuss how to allocate funds and give these teens the right to mental health services that they so deserve. These are amazing people, and they deserve rights, and you can't shut them down, no matter how hard you try. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stack, thank you, Olivia. We'll now move to Essence Burton Jordan, please. Essence Burton Jordan, please.
Hey, um, hi, hello, and good evening to all. I just want to say before that my testimony does not contain any information from my mental health or physical student health records, I am simply sharing my experience, void of any confidential information or school record information. Therefore, I do not need any written consent to share with you all today. Um, my name is Essence Burton Jordan, I am a current teen organizer for the Pioneer Valley Project, also known as P V P. I am currently a high school senior, and I attend Roger L. Putnam Vocational Technical Academy. I'm a Springfield resident and was raised here, attending Rebecca M. Johnson for Elementary School and Springfield Conservatory of the Arts for Middle School. As a teen growing up in Springfield and going to Springfield schools, I have noticed as I got in order that there's a lack of resources for teen mental health. There's a lack of resources for teen mental health in schools, after-school programs, and more. Especially amongst the black community, there's a lack of resources in the community for us all to help with our mental health. I know from not only my own personal experience, but also from my peers and their struggles with mental health. Recently, at P V P, we put together a survey for teens to see where their mental health needs are, what mental health issues they deal with. Do they have access to resources for help, and do they trust the adults placed in their lives, like teachers, school counselors, administration, and more for help? We have received over 250 responses from these Springfield teen residents, and every single one stated that they suffer with many different aspects of mental health issues, whether it be anxiety, depression, social anxiety, PTSD, panic attacks, isolation, and even suicidal thought. They feel like they can't get help from anywhere or anyone who they can trust, especially in school, which is where teens spend most of their time. We would like to request a meeting with you all personally to discuss these issues and how to change and fix them, because if not, we will continue to lose our teens to suicide every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Essence. Davian Pagan, please. Say again, Davian Pagan.
Good evening, members of the school committee, my name is Davian Pagan, I'm 15 and a sophomore at Springfield Honors Academy. I'm here with P V P to talk about the issue of teen mental health. The need to address mental crisis in schools must be taken seriously. The lockdown caused economic, mental, and social hardships among teens and their families. The vast majority of my friends were negatively affected by the lockdown, and even I was impacted academically. Many students have jobs, siblings, and other obligations on top of their academic work. The combination of all these things can, can and has contributed to low mental health. In a survey completed by 250 students of S P S, about two-thirds said they could not find adequate mental health services at their school. The district must do its part in addressing, excuse me, to educate, fund, and actually understand mental health and address this issue. Students are hurting, and as mental health decreases, productivity decreases. The reality is that students are behind, and as mental health continues to drop, there will be pushback even further. Solving this problem will not be easier, but it will take conversations between students and leaders. As we have not been allowed to meet with you in person tonight, we ask that each of you take the time to meet with us, so we can share our stories, look at the data, and learn more about your priorities relating to this issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pagan. Alvin Guzman, Alvin Guzman, please.
I'm listening, I'm listening.
Say again, Alvin Guzman. Okay, we'll move on to Charles Cope, please. Charles Cope. 再说一次, Charles Cope. Okay, wir kommen zu Deja King.
I'm here.
Deja King, bitte.
Charles Cope ist hier.
Oh, gehen Sie voran, Herr Cope.
Guten Abend. Ich bin Charles Cope mit Pioneer Valley Project. Heute möchte ich über Jugendliche Mental Health Fragen sprechen und wie es in das System eingebunden wird. Und meine Testung enthält keine Informationen über meine mentale oder körperliche Studenten records. Ich teile einfach meine Erfahrung, ohne irgendwelche confidentialen Informationen oder Schulverzeichnisinformationen. Deshalb brauche ich keine und werde keine gelegentliche Vertrauen mit euch allen teilen. COVID hat unsere Lebensweisen in einem drastischen Weise verändert und hat unsere Mental Health und Bewusstsein auch. Viele von uns haben viele verschiedene Emotionen und alleine mit ihnen. Auch wenn viele von uns die gleiche Sache erlebt haben. Mental Health sollte sehr ernsthaft behandelt werden und es eine breitere Strahlung braucht, um alle in Bedarf zu erreichen. Ich glaube, dass es eine größere Vielzahl von Möglichkeiten für Studenten und andere Jugendliche geben sollte, um Hilfe zu suchen, die sie brauchen. Ich persönlich, wenn ich mental Health Hilfe suchte, wüsste ich nicht, wo ich beginnen würde. Obwohl es viele Möglichkeiten gibt, zu schauen, wenn ich mit meiner Schulunterrichtsleiter spreche. Nicht jeder Jugendlicher möchte mit einer Schulunterrichtsleiter sprechen oder sogar Hilfe von ihnen fordern. Denn viele von ihnen sind so schrecklich, um darüber zu sprechen, was perfekt okay ist und warum die Optionen besser öffentlich und auf der Seite sind. Schulunterrichtsleiter sollten mehr Möglichkeiten haben, um Studenten zu helfen. Und es sollte für Studenten, die nicht wollen, zu sprechen, klarer sein, um Hilfe zu finden, die sie brauchen und wollen, auch mit diesen Schritten zu finden. Und was sie von diesen Dingen bekommen werden. Denn jeder sucht verschiedene Dinge und braucht verschiedene Dinge aus verschiedenen Orten. Und es gibt einige Menschen, die in öffentlichen Schulen sind und nicht Zugang zu Dingen haben, durch Unterrichtsleiter, aber verdienen den Recht, Hilfe zu finden.
Können Sie uns etwas fragen? Was Schulen Sie in, bitte? Herr Cope, nur was Schulen, damit wir eine Hilfe finden können?
Springfield Central High School.
Okay, vielen Dank. Deja King, bitte.
Hello, everyone. Mein Name ist Deja Rose. Ich bin ein Teen Youth Organizer für Pioneer Valley Project. Und bevor ich beginne, möchte ich sagen, meine Testung enthält keine Informationen über meine Mental Health oder die身體學的學生記錄不包含 Ich teile einfach meine Erfahrung und ist ohne confidentialen Informationen oder Schulverzeichnisinformationen. Deshalb brauche ich keine gelegentliche Vertrauen, um euch heute zu teilen. 根据 federal law, öffentliche Plätze, wie die öffentliche Aussprache heute, sind angewandt von Regierungsstaaten für offene Sprech- und Sprache. Ich kam heute mit meiner Team, um Informationen über Jugendliche Mental Health zu teilen. Und warum es wichtig ist, dass dieses ganze Schulkomitee heute mit uns diskutiert, um weitere Aktionen zu diskutieren. Wir hatten Jugendliche in der Stadt Springfield, die ein Mental Health Survey beteiligt haben gegenüber dem Auswirkungen von COVID. Wir haben über 250 Antworten, und jede war einzigartig und sehr eigen. Der Hauptproblem, den wir bemerken, ist, dass jede Jugendliche in Schwierigkeiten hat und Ressourcen haben, um sie zu unterstützen. Ich selbst stimme zu, dass ich eine unheilige Meinung habe über die Pandemie. Und jetzt kommt es immer wieder zu mir schmerzen. Wie wir alle wissen, ist Remoten stressig für die Mental Health. Und mit dem gesagt worden, meine Erfahrung war ein dunkler Ort, der meine Leben verbrachte. Online Schulen haben meine Ruhe gehabt, weil es eine konstante Erinnerung zur Isolation war. Ich habe Zeit für Treffen und Aufgaben, um zu entscheiden, ob meine Zukunft wert ist, aufzunehmen. Wir wollen euch wissen, dass es wichtig ist, euch zu识別, dass wir diese Jugendlichen unterstützen. Gebt uns Zeit, um zusammenzuarbeiten, um dieses Problem zu lösen.
Welche Schule Sie in der Schule sind, um eine Antwort zu geben? Deja, bitte.
Welche Schule?
Welche Schule?
Ich bin an Roger L. Putnam Academy.
Danke. Katherine Thompson, bitte. 再说一次, Katherine Thompson. Einmal mehr, Katherine Thompson. Okay, wir kommen zu Devay Terry Kelly. Und wenn ich Ihre Namen nicht richtig nennen kann... Go ahead, Katherine, Ms. Thompson. Go ahead, lieber.
Guten Abend. Mein Name ist Katherine Thompson. Ich bin Senior an Central, und ich bin hier mit Pioneer Valley Project. Meine Testung enthält keine Informationen über meine mentale oder körperliche Studenten records. Ich teile einfach meine Erfahrung, ohne confidentialen Informationen oder Schulverzeichnisinformationen. Deshalb brauche ich keine gelegentliche Vertrauen, um euch heute zu teilen. Als jemand, der in der Schule durch Remoten lernen hatte, und die transition... Die transition zurück zu in-person-Lernen, ich weiß, wie stressig diese letzten paar Jahre für unsere Studenten waren. Die Pandemie hat uns alle sehr unterschiedlich beeinträchtigt, speziell unsere Mental Health. Mental Health ist ein wichtiges Thema, jedoch haben unsere Schulen, in meiner Meinung, es fehlte. Seit dem Beginn der COVID-19-Pandemie haben viele junge Männer die Gelegenheit nicht gehabt, ihre Mental State zu evaluieren. Als Pandemie und Quarantäne waren es sehr isolierende Zeiten für viele von uns. Einige Menschen hatten nicht jemanden, mit dem sie sprachen, letztlich nur über ihre Mental Health. Eine der Gründe ist, weil es eine Lohn für Jugendliche gibt, die diese Ressourcen nutzen. Wo sollten Jugendliche suchen, wenn sie Hilfe oder Unterstützung brauchen? Natürlich sind es Lehrer und Ärzte, aber wir brauchen mehr Fachkräfte, die auf Mental Health Services für Studenten bieten. Stimmt das nicht? Das ist genau die Grundlage dafür, dass wir euch alle treffen, um uns über den nächsten Monat zu treffen. Wir wollen wissen, wo ihr darauf steht, dieses Problem. Das Studium, das wir über Jugendliche Mental Health gemacht haben, hat über 250 Antworten von Jugendlichen in Springfield. Wir wollen mehr dieser Information mit euch teilen. Und wir wollen wissen, wie ihr alle mental Health Support für Studenten in der Budgetperiode machen wird. Wir hoffen, dass wir euch sehr bald zusammenkommen. Danke.
Danke, Ms. Thompson. Devay Terry Kelly. Und wenn ich Ihre Namen nicht richtig nennen kann, bitte korrekt mich.
Ich bin hier. Ihr Nennung ist korrekt.
Danke.
Hi, mein Name ist Devay Terry Kelly, und ich bin ein Sophanter an Putnam Vocational. Kann ich euch hören?
Go ahead.
Okay. Mein Name ist Devay Terry Kelly, und ich bin ein Sophanter an Putnam Vocational. Hier mit PVP, hier mit PVP, und hier, um über Jugendliche Mental Health zu sprechen und den Support, den wir nicht haben. Meine Testung enthält keine Informationen über meine Mental Health oder die身体學的學生記錄不包含 Ich teile einfach meine Erfahrung, ohne confidentialen Informationen oder Schulverzeichnisinformationen. Deshalb brauche ich keine gelegentliche Vertrauen, um euch heute zu teilen. Mental Health ist immer gesprochen, und Support ist immer erreichbar für Jugendliche. Und ich glaube, es ist seit COVID angefangen, immer mehr ernsthaft. Also, es gibt keine Ressourcen für Jugendliche, die über ihre Mental Health sprechen. Ist es nicht in den Schulbudget? Ist es nicht ein Priorität für euch? Die Menschen, mit denen wir sprechen, sind hier, aber nicht mit uns face-to-face sprechen. Ihr macht jede, ihr macht jede Entscheidung jeden Tag über unsere Lebensweise, die nicht leben. Wir könnten wertvolle Input geben, jedoch, ihr hört nicht. Als Collective, wir bitten, eine face-to-face Treffen mit euch alle zu, um unsere Bemühungen und Ideen über Jugendliche Mental Health zu diskutieren. Über die letzten drei Jahre, seit COVID, haben viele Menschen mit Mental Health Fragen behandelt, aber fühlen, als ob sie niemanden sprechen können, nicht nur die Menschen in ihrem Haus. Also, ich finde, als Collective sollten wir eine positive Öffentlichkeit schaffen, damit die Menschen darüber sprechen können, was sie durchlaufen, ohne irgendeinen Entscheidung. Zeiten haben verändert, und die Menschen sind mehr offen, um zu sprechen, was sie durchlaufen, aber sie wissen nicht, wie zu starten oder wo zu gehen.
Vielen Dank. Naomi Edwards, bitte. Naomi Edwards. 再说一次...
Okay, ich bin hier.
Okay, gehen Sie voran, Ms. Edwards.
Guten Abend. Mein Name ist Naomi Edwards. Ich bin Student in Springfield Honors Academy und lifetime resident of Springfield. Und ich bin aktuell mit PVP. Meine Testung enthält keine Informationen über meine mentale oder körperliche Studenten records. Ich teile einfach meine Erfahrung, ohne confidentialen Informationen oder Schulverzeichnisinformationen. Deshalb brauche ich keine gelegentliche Vertrauen, um euch heute zu teilen. Lately haben Schulen begonnen, die Wichtigkeit der Mental Health durch superficialen Dinge zu erkennen, wie Posten und Slogan. Jedoch ist die Erkennung des Problems einfach nicht genug, um unsere Jugendliche zu helfen. Während der letzten paar Jahre hat COVID komplett die Art, wie Springfield Studenten ihre Lebens verbringen. Und entsetzlich oder unerkannt von unserer Stadt hat eine andere Pandemie Springfield-Jugend geplagt. Schlimmere und unbehandelte Mental Health Bedingungen. Für die Interessen der Schülerinnen und Schüler in Springfield, die heutige und zukünftige Lebensziele, müssen effektive und accessible Mental Health Ressourcen in Schulen sofort benötigt werden. Die konstante akademische Drucke, dass man ein High School Student ist, um seine Zukunft zu navigieren, auch mit der schlimmen Bedingung unserer Stadt, hat definitiv einen Schlag auf die Studenten gebracht. Und als Sophant in der High School, tut es mir tief schmerzen, meine schwierigen Kollegen zu sehen, um Substanzen zu verwenden, zu Selbstverletzung und sogar zu versuchen, suicide zu verursachen. Die stiegernde Gesundheit der Studenten ist in einem Studium, in dem 97% von 252 Springfield Studenten sagen, dass sie regelmäßig mit Angst, Depression oder anderen Mental Health Behinderungen kämpfen. Die meisten von denen fühlen, als ob sie keinen Menschen haben, mit dem sie über ihre Probleme sprechen. Und als Teen, ich weiß dieses Gefühl alles so gut, und ich weiß, wie schade es kann. Seit März 2020 sind wir von der Welt isoliert. Wir sind zu Gewalt widersetzt. Und schlimmsten davon, wir wurden von den politischen Leitern in Springfield, die uns helfen sollen. Durch diese Themen ignorieren wir unsere Studenten, unsere Kinder und unsere Zukunft. Und mit den zahlreichen Wirkungen der Pandemie und ihres disproportionateen Wirkungsbeeinflussung auf diejenigen, die unterwegs sind, muss Mental Health Support in den Schulen mehr als je zuvor benötigt werden. Und um zu Ende zu kommen, bitten wir eine Treffen mit allen Mitgliedern des Schulkomitees im nächsten Monat, um weiter zu diskutieren und unsere Bemühungen zu expressen. Vielen Dank.
Vielen Dank, Ms. Edwards. Sineia Sylvia, bitte.
Hi.
Hello.
Okay, bevor ich beginne, meine Testung enthält keine Informationen über meine mentale oder körperliche Studenten records. Ich teile einfach meine Erfahrung, ohne confidentialen Informationen oder Schulverzeichnisinformationen. Deshalb brauche ich keine gelegentliche Vertrauen, um euch heute zu teilen. Mein Name ist Sineia, und ich bin ein Sophanter an Putnam. Ich bin Team Leader mit Pioneer Valley Project, und ich bin heute hier, um über Jugendliche Mental Health zu sprechen. Meine Mental Health. Unsere Mental Health ist prioritär, und ich weiß nicht, warum. Nach COVID waren wir in einer Krise von Millionen Jugendlicher, die schwierig waren. Ihr, als Springfield School Committee, habt die Ressourcen und Finanzierungen, um uns Aussehen zu bieten, aber ihr habt es nicht. Ist es, weil ihr nicht weißt, was wir brauchen? Ist es, weil ihr nicht wisst, wie ihr das Problem behandeln sollt? Ich verstehe nicht, warum wir noch afraid sind, über Mental Health zu sprechen. Es ist 2023, und der Welt ist verändert. Wir sind die Zukunft, glauben wir oder nicht, und Jugendliche Mental Health ist nicht zu behalten. Viele von uns haben Schwierigkeiten, unsere normalen Lebensformen zu verändern. Ja, ihr könnt uns für die Hochschule und unsere Karriere vorbereiten. Ja, ihr könnt neue Technologie in unseren Schulen bringen. Aber was über unsere Gesundheit? Wir vergessen oft viel darüber, obwohl es das wichtigste ist. Keinesfalls ist es wichtig, wenn ihr Jugendliche mit Depression, Angst, suicide Gedanken oder sogar Zeiten hat, die nur schmerzhaft fühlen. Sie nutzen sich einfach Sachen wie Selbstverletzung oder Substanzenverbreitung oder suicide Gedanken, wie Naomi sagte. Einfach jemanden zu sprechen, würde so viel helfen. Also, wir als Collective bitten euch, uns einzeln, face-to-face, zu sprechen über diese Themen. Danke.
Danke, Ms. Sylvia. Der letzten Redner ist Maya Griffin, bitte. Ms. Griffin.
Okay. Erstens möchte ich sagen, dass meine Testung keine Informationen über meine mentale oder körperliche Studenten records enthält. Ich teile einfach meine Erfahrung, ohne irgendwelche confidentialen Informationen oder Schulverzeichnisinformationen. Deshalb brauche ich keine gelegentliche Vertrauen, um euch heute zu teilen. Guten Abend zu allen. Mein Name ist Anaya Griffin. Ich bin Student in Springfield, und ich gehe zu Springfield Central High School. Und ich spreche mit dem Pioneer Valley Programm. Mental Health sollte viel ernsthaft behandelt werden. Mehr als das, es gibt nicht genug Ressourcen für diejenigen, die Hilfe suchen. Während Quarantäne, habe ich mich in Depression und Angst gefunden. Ich hatte das Gefühl, dass ich, durch das Ich rausgehen würde, von einem Gericht verurteilt würde. Schlimmer, ich weiß nicht, wer ich rausgehen oder wo finden, um die Hilfe, die ich benötigte. Und ich weiß, das ist üblich mit meinen Kollegen. Dieses überwiegende Gefühl ist eine Muttersinn für Kinder und junge Menschen weltweit. Lehrende Behandlung hat ein negatives Stigma, also entscheiden die Menschen nicht oder wissen einfach nicht, wo sie sich umdrehen. Was kann schädlich sein. Ich glaube, dass diese Lohn für die Jugendliche, die Lohn für die Erfahrung, die die Lohn für die Erfahrung hat, wie und wo man Hilfe suchen kann. Schulen sollten ein beruhigender Hafen sein, ein Ort, wo diese Ressourcen für Kinder und Jugendliche verfügbar sind. Vielen Dank für euer Zeit.
Vielen Dank. Das beendet sich. Welche Schule, Ms. Griffin?
Springfield Central.
Springfield, danke.
Ja.
Das beendet sich, die öffentliche Aussprache. Wir danken sehr viel dafür. Und jetzt gehen wir in einen Minutenrezession. Und vielen Dank an alle Studenten. Es braucht viel Kraft, die Aussprache zu sprechen über diese Situation, die wir sehr ernsthaft nehmen. Um euch zu wissen, vielleicht müssen wir euch die Information bekommen. Wir hatten eine Anfangszeit für Jugendliche Mental Health Situationen an der Community Music School of Springfield, in der MLK, South End Community Center, viele von BHN sind alle beteiligt. Das ist alle von Jugendlichen geführt. Und wir brauchen, wahrscheinlich, mehr Informationen über das. Kommissar, Health and Human Services Commissioner Helen Colton-Harris sagt, wir sind durch die COVID-Pandemie durchgegangen. Wir haben, wir wurden von Ebony Magazine für den Koalition, die wir zusammengefunden haben, die eine Jugendkoalition beteiligt hatte, die Mental Health. Und dann denke ich, Superintendent Warwick wird darauf hinzufügen, dass wir den Budget für die Mental Health erhöht haben. Also, wir wollen helfen. Vielleicht gibt es mehr Informationen, die ihr nicht wisst. Aber ironisch, zwei Wochen vorher hatten wir die Anfangszeit an der Community Music School, mit einer Reihe von Community Centers, BHN, alle geführt von Jugendlichen. Alle geführt von Jugendlichen. Und wir hatten die Posten, die Aussagen, die gesamte Dinge, und sie sprachen über sie. Und wo Hilfe gegeben und Support Systeme vorhanden sind. Also, vielleicht müssen wir eine bessere Arbeit machen, das Information zu Ihnen zu bekommen. Aber während COVID, hatten wir ein Jugendgruppe, das Veranstaltungen, Veranstaltungen und virtuelle Veranstaltungen gehalten, um unsere Studenten oder junge Menschen zu helfen, die mental Health Herausforderungen hatten. Und auf der Schulseite, um zu erneut zu sagen, das war eine der ersten Dinge, die Superintendent Warwick gemacht hat im Schulkomitee, die den Budget für Mental Health unterstützt hat. Aber wir sind glücklich, dass ihr unsere Aufmerksamkeit gebracht habt. Unser Bottom Line ist, euch die Hilfe zu bekommen, die ihr und eure Familie benötigt. Aber zu sagen, wir haben nichts gemacht, es gibt ein Jugendgruppe, das es jetzt hat. Und ich empfehle euch, euch wahrscheinlich mit diesem Jugendgruppe zu beteiligen. Wahrscheinlich Mitglieder, die ihr wisst. Auf dem. Also, wir hoffen darauf. Und worauf es auch noch geht, wir wünschen euch gute Gesundheit. Das ist das Nummer eins Priorität. Das beendet sich, öffentliche Aussprache. Vielen, sehr, vielen Dank. Guten Abend. Wir rufen eine Treffen an. Nochmals unsere Entschuldigung. Die öffentliche Aussprache ging ein wenig spät, aber es war ein wichtiges Thema. Und wir danken unseren Jugendlichen und Studenten, die über dieses Thema sprechen. Madam Kanzler, bitte rufen Sie die Rolle. Herr Gonzalez ist an der Porte de graduate, auch mit dem Vizevorsitzenden, Neilor. Und sie beide sind teilnehmend, sie repräsentieren uns an der Schulkomitee, teilnehmend virtuell. So, Herr Gonzalez. 再说一次, Herr Gonzalez.
Latonya, könnt ihr uns hören?
Ich kann euch hören, aber könnt ihr mich hören?
Ja. Okay, ich sage es noch einmal.
Okay.
Herr Gonzalez. Okay, gehen Sie fort, Madam Kanzler.
Hier.
Present.
Present, wenn ihr meinen Namen nennen könnt. Tut mir leid, die Airport Monitor war gerade.
Okay. Präsident, können wir alle bitte für einen Moment der Schweigungen rücken? Und dann den Pledge of Allegiance?
Ich plege den Pledge of Allegiance an die Flagge der Vereinigten Staaten Amerikas und an die Republik, für die es standet. Eine Name, unter Gott, indivisibel, mit Freiheit und Justiz für alle.
Vielen Dank. Und frohe Anfang Saint Patrick's Day für jeden und alle, besonders Irish-American. Wir kommen nun zu dem Erlaubnis der Minuten. Erlauben Sie die Minuten der Februar 9, 2023 Regular Session und der 2. März 2023, Chapter 74 Advisory School Committee Meetings. Keine Fragen oder Kommentare?
So gehen Sie, Herr.
Hörbar keines. Es gibt ein Urteil von Herrn Collins. Ist er zweiter?
Zweiter.
Zweiter von Ms. Gresham. Rollcall, wenn es geboten ist. Madam Kanzler, bitte rufen Sie die Rolle.
Ja. Absent Herr Gonzalez? Absent Herr Collins?
Ja.
Ms. Gresham?
Ja.
Ms. Monroe Naylor? Ms. Monroe Nayler?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more than sufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you. Section 3 is voting items. A is to approve the Lincoln Elementary School field trip request to Redgate Farm, which we go to a lot, March 23rd, 2023, and returning on March 25th, 2023. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. There's an informational piece in your packet on this. As the mayor said, this is a trip that our schools take often, and this is for Lincoln Elementary School. Mr. McCann is available if you have any questions.
There's any questions or comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Attorney Murphy? Absent Mr. Gonzalez? Absent Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Monroe Nayler?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more than sufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you. B is to approve the Dryden School Field Trip Request to Redgate Farm on May 15th, 2023, returning on May 17th, 2023. Superintendent Warwick, please.
And there's an informational piece in your packet on this. I'm recommending approval.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick.
Test carry is available if anyone has a question.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy? Absent. Mr. Gonzalez? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Monroe Nayler?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more than sufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you. C is to approve Springfield Central High School Field Trip Request for Gear Up Event in Boston, Massachusetts, on March 24th, 2027. Is that correct? Or is that a typo? March 24th, 2023?
That would be 2023, correct.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that. That's well ahead of time there.
Yes, indeed. They were really getting it ahead of time there.
Just a typo, March 24th, 2023, returning after 10:00 PM to learn about career opportunities in the NBA Boston Celtics industry and to watch the Boston Celtics play the Indiana Pacers, the basketball game. Superintendent Warwick?
Yeah, Gear Up's involved with several of our schools, so the next three trips are all associated with Gear Up at Central Conservatory in Putnam. Principal Tokars is here, if anyone has any questions about it.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion on the floor? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Gresham, go ahead.
Thank you. So, how will they transfer? Will they go by public bus or will they go school bus?
School bus.
School bus. Okay. Do you know how many students are going?
Do we?
It did in the application.
Potential? Maya?
Principal Tokars?
Can you answer that question?
Yes, please, Principal Tokar.
So, I'm from Central. I'm the Gear Up Advisor at Central, and we're taking five of our students.
Again, please. Sorry.
So, I'm the Gear Up Advisor at Central, and Central is taking five students as well.
Five, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Five. Any other questions or comments?
Five.
Five. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gresham, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy? Absent. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Monroe Nayler?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more than sufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you. D is to approve the Springfield Conservatory of the Arts Field Trip Request for Gear Up Event in Boston, Massachusetts, again, on March 24th, 2023. The typo, they're returning after 10:00 PM to learn about career opportunities in the NBA Boston Celtics industry and to watch the Boston Celtics-Indiana Pacers basketball game. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Yes, Ryan Kelly is available if anyone has a question. There's an informational piece in your package on it.
Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hurst. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy? Absent. Mr. Gonzalez? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Monroe Nayler?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more than sufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you. E is to approve Putnam Vocational Technical Academy Field Trip Request for Gear Up Event in Boston, Massachusetts, on March 24th, 2023, returning after 10:00 PM to learn about career opportunities in the NBA Boston Celtics industry and to watch the Boston Celtics-Indiana Pacers basketball game. Superintendent Warwick, please.
And there's an informational package in your, I mean informational piece in your package on it, and someone from Putnam is available if you have any questions. This is the same trip.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Collins, is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hurst. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy? Absent. Mr. Gonzalez? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Monroe Nayler?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more than sufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you. F is to approve an expenditure of $12,150 for Mass Hire Hampton County Workforce Board for FY '23. This is for the High School Senior Internship Education Project Grant, and Dave Cruz and his team do such a great job for us. We appreciate that. Superintendent Warwick, please.
You're right. Dave Cruz has been a great partner from Mass Hire, and Pam Atheson from our internship supervisor has actually done a fabulous job getting kids out on internships. Pam, do you want to give them a brief overview of the program?
Superintendent Warwick, it's Kim Wells. I'm actually going to give a quick overview, if that's okay.
Yep. Thank you, Kim.
No problem. Thank you. This grant in the amount of $12,150 was secured through the Mass Hire program, and the program is scheduled to provide paid internship opportunities for high schools who are interested in attending college to go into our education pipeline. The students have to be in good academic standing and be interested in providing educational supports to students in grades K through eight. So, we've actually been working, you know, with the acceptance of the grant to be able to provide paid internships for students to continue to support our pipeline in terms of growing our teachers and having them come back to the city and, you know, really, you know, work in our, in our school system. So, we're really excited about the opportunity to be able to provide some paid internships to our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Any questions or comments of Ms. Wells?
It's been through budget and finance. I didn't know if...
It got unanimous, Mr. Collins. Support in budget and finance. Well-done presentation and really good for kids.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy? Absent. Mr. Gonzalez? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Monroe Nayler?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more than sufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you. G is to approve the 2023-2024 School Year Calendar. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Yeah, there's a piece in your package on this with everything laid out. This is a calendar that's very similar to what we've done for the last several years. We have our APD days built into this and the whole calendar laid out by the month for you. And again, the schools end when it's been in session for 180 days, so the tentative last day would be June 20th, but that's all based on when we actually complete the 180th day in session. But again, a similar profile coming back before Labor Day, as we've done in the past, so that we finish on time. So, it's worked really well for us, and we're recommending we go with it again.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments from school committee members? Hearing none. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gresham, is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy? Absent. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Monroe Nayler?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more than sufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you. H is to approve the project for submittal to the Mass School Building Authority, MSBA, for the 2023 Statement of Interest as stated below. Resolved, having convened an open meeting on March 16th, 2023, prior to the Statement of Interest submission closing date, the School Committee of Springfield, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Mass School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated April 18th, 2023, for Jermaine Arena Community School located at 200 Bernie Avenue, Springfield, Mass., which describes and explains the following deficiencies and priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority 1, 5, and 7, for the replacement of an installation of the heating, ventilation, air conditioning, HVAC systems, for the entire educational complex, and for the associated exterior envelope repairs required by the new HVA systems, and a review and build-out of all POD classrooms and replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for full-range programs consistent with the state and approved local requirements, and hereby furthers specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city, town, regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which we've had an outstanding relationship in most in the Commonwealth, three-quarters of $1 billion, $750 million in new schools and renovated schools, which have been done under our, my administration. Superintendent Warwick, you want to clarify a little more?
Yeah, what we did was we had questions relative to how we should list this, because Arena is a complicated school. So, I called Jack McCarthy, the Executive Director of the Mass School Building Authority, and I asked him how, what priorities we should list to categorize for Arena, and he asked us to go with Priorities 1, 5, and 7 in their priority list, which will in effect be requesting a new building for Arena because of antiquated systems, so. And he was very positive about the submission, so it was a very positive conversation. So, we brought it through to the Building and Maintenance Committee, and this would complete our submissions this year to MSBA.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Mr. Collins, you have any comments for that?
This is the way they ask this is to submit it, so this is the way we'll submit it.
Okay. And Jack is, again, Jack McCarthy's been great, and Treasurer Deb Goldberg's been great too, so hopefully that could be another new school we can build in the near future. Any questions or comments from school committee members? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hurst. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy? Absent. Mr. Gonzalez? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Monroe Nayler?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more than sufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you very much. We'll now move to informational discussion items. A is the Friedman School Best Practices Update. Superintendent?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
My flight is boarding, so I have to go, but I just wanted to make sure I acknowledged that I'll be signing off.
All right, safe passage, safe passage. Thank you, Vice Chair Nayler.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, informational items is Section 4. A, Friedman School Best Practices Update. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Yeah, you have a package in your packet on this. We have Medina Ali and her team here to present on best practices from Friedman. Friedman was another school that had an exceptional, positive year last year with data. The scaled score was up to 493.3 and actually went up in ELA during the pandemic. The student growth percent went up 21.5% last year to 50.1%. Math went up 9.9 points to 487.4, and their SGP went up 31.9 points to 52.7, so exceptional gains there. Science also had a 6.1 gain, up to 491.2. So, Friedman really had an exceptional year, recovering from the pandemic much faster than most of the schools in the Commonwealth. So, Principal Medina Ali and her team are here to present some of their secrets to success.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Madam Principal?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Sarno and Superintendent Warwick. Can you hear me?
Yes, Principal Ali, thank you.
Thank you for allowing my team to share some of the best practice. When we were putting the slide together, believe it or not, we had quite a bit, and so we had to reduce it to a reasonable amount, because I know our time is limited. We do a lot of different activity, working with our students. We see, first of all, as it relates to staff, everyone has a voice, so we work together as a team. Everyone is important, including our custodian, all our teachers, paraprofessionals. So, we work together as a team. It's not one person's show, it's collectively working together. Presently, I have with us our IOT members, and I thank my IOT for being here and being patient and waiting. They represent every group in our, in our school from different grades, our ILSs, our interventionists, they're all here, our preschool teacher, so we're all, we're together collectively, and that's one of the secrets of our successes, because we work together as a team, including, before I don't want to forget our paraprofessional, because they're also the secret sauce. And we have Ms. Watson, who is a representative from the paraprofessional here. So, we have everyone from the spectrum of Friedman here representing our school tonight, and you will hear some input of what they said. Okay, do you want me to share the screen?
Yes. Yes, Principal Ali, thank you.
Okay. So, I'd like to begin by saying that, you know, we were an awesome school. We have been blessed with many faculty of diverse background, and so now it starts.
Yes. Effective and consistent Tier One instruction.
Can you get it?
Consistent monitoring of Tier Two and Tier Three interventions, SPS unit pacing guides implemented as intended, priority of equity and culturally relevant practices, honor and core curriculum, and data guides, discussions for instructional decisions. As it relates to data, it speaks for itself. We outperform the district in ELA, math, and science. We also outperform the state in some of the standards in ELA, math, and science.
My name is Kenna Edwards. I am a student at Friedman Elementary School. Our instructional focuses here at Friedman will be aptly engaged each day in reading, writing, math, and diverse and culturally relevant practices. Friedman's instructional focus encompasses all of our instructional programs and leads the work of our school. Two years ago, we added diverse and culturally relevant practices because we wanted each student to have a voice and as a staff to help foster independence and identity in our students.
Evening. My name is Laura Rita, and I am the Instructional Leadership Specialist for ELA at Friedman Elementary School. ELA at Friedman Elementary School. Here at Friedman, we have many goals for ourselves and the students. But one of the main goals for ELA is for every student to be reading at or above grade level expectations before entering third grade. In order to achieve this goal, a strategic plan was developed at the beginning of the school year. Looking at the data, a significant amount of students in the lower grades were not meeting their reading goals. This is a direct result of the interrupted learning from COVID. The foundation of our strategic plan consists of making sure every student receives explicit, consistent reading instruction every day during small group from their homeroom teacher using the approved district reading programs. In addition, any student not meeting grade level expectations receives reading instruction every day from interventionist or myself using CEPs. As we monitor students' reading data, we are seeing significant improvements in students meeting or exceeding their grade level at reading expectations.
My name is Angela Leirverne. I'm the math ILS. We do have some math goals as well. Our students will gain strong numeracy by implementing purposefully planned, rigorous instruction with an intentional focus on implementing mathematical tasks that promote reasoning and problem solving to ensure students are meeting or exceeding grade level expectations. And we expect that from grades pre-K all the way through grade five.
At Friedman Elementary School, we implement interventions throughout multiple subject areas, including reading, writing, and mathematics. Using a multi-tiered organizational framework, we ensure that students' needs are met through targeted interventions. As educators, we design lessons and use data to make well-informed decisions that will produce the best outcome for each student. This framework allows teachers to use evidence-based practices to ensure that all students are progressing at their individual and grade level goals. It also allows us to consistently use data to proactively make changes to intervene, support, and enrich students' academic needs. Additionally, we work on common goals by creating a positive educational environment that supports the learning styles, academic levels of all students.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gloria Scarlett, and I will be reporting on small group instruction in reading and math at Freeman Elementary School. Small group instruction is part of our eyes at Freeman. This most important teaching strategy helps teachers to meet the needs of the students where necessary. Conference is also one of the tools utilized by teachers during small group instruction, independent reading and writing. Conferencing helps students verbalize and adjust their thoughts as well as practice important skills. Immediately after conferencing, students are given prompt explicit feedbacks on their work, which they can use to improve their skills in reading, writing, and math.
We prioritize creating partnerships with families that recognize their value, assets, and needs. We have three family engagement programs at our school. The first one is the PTO, our Parent Teacher Organization Team. Our coordinator, Teresa Plazi, which is our kindergarten teacher, and we have two parents on this team. PTO has worked on the following fundraisers: Pine Face, Holiday Shop, Valentine's Day Carnation Sale, and our March Madness Calendar Raffle.
SEDOM is another team at our school. SEDOM stands for School Center Decision Movement Team. President of SEDOM is Mr. Dennis Brown along with other six members. Accomplishments of SEDOM are followed. Last year, SEDOM implemented a COVID strategy of spraying all door knobs with disinfectant twice a week. They worked with Hitchcock Center for student learning opportunities. SEDOM also facilitated a science expo to prepare students for MCAS. They implemented the Legacy Award, given to a fifth grade student who excels in math, science, and ELA. Last year, SEDOM helped with the fifth grade step-up ceremony. They were also instrumental in getting our driveway repaired this winter.
We're also very excited for Parent Teacher Home Visit Project this year. We're needed as well, along with eight staff members. We conduct home visits to families in our school to build trusting and meaningful relationships outside of the school setting in benefit of the whole family. We have eight families participating this year, and our team members go to visit parents, and we visit families twice a year.
Friedman is proud to host our second annual cultural show in town. At Friedman, we embrace and respect the diverse culture of our students and staff. We build and grow relationships to connect with families. Our students know we care, for we demonstrate on a daily basis that we are committed to their success.
Mr. Perez from the Friedman Elementary School Counseling Department. Just to give a quick overview of what we do here. Our school adjustment counselor, Toy Man, does IEP counseling. She also oversees functional behavioral assessments and behavioral intervention plans, and she's also our 504 coordinator. We supervise two interns who help us do our whole workload, especially lunch bunch groups and check-in, checkout. With our check-in, checkout, we casually see students once a week just to see how they're doing. As a City Connects Coordinator here at the school, assess every child in the building, and after those assessments, we see how we can support them with referrals to outside agencies or sports or after-school programs, whatever that might be. One of the co-coaches for our PBIS team along with Judy Payne, we do monthly PBIS events, positive behavioral intervention strategies to just reward our kids, to, to just motivate them to, you know, perform and behave positively. We also do staff pick-me-up events as well. Toy and I, and the interns, do second step lessons, which is our social emotional class, where we teach kids about feelings and emotions as well as how to cope. As we get closer to MCAS, we do a lot of test anxiety work, and we also do bullying prevention, especially for climate control here at the school. I also facilitate stats where we see what a child's strengths are, whatever current concerns they have, and we create interventions and goals to support them. And a lot of times, this paperwork is useful if we feel we need to go the special education evaluation route.
Principal Ali, can I, can I just ask-
More culturally relevant within our practices.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Yeah, Principal Ali, I just wanted to again commend you and your team. And that last presentation, young man there, just to reiterate, and maybe Superintendent Warwick can expand, that we have a full-fledged counseling type aspect, which as you noted there, and I commend you, deals with many mental health situations or behavioral situations, wraparound services for that, and whether sports or family things on it. So this is something Superintendent Warwick, again, to state that we have in every school. You've expanded the budget, you've expanded this also. So from grammar school, well, actually from pre-K all the way up, you have this. This is just to the viewing audience. I know many watch the public speak out there. Just to, once again, strengthen what we have when it's noted that we're not doing anything whatsoever. We'll always look to do more. But that was very comprehensive, Principal Ali, of the young man that made that presentation and then the checks that occur. And before I go back to your presentation, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Warwick, just to, again, reiterate that we do value mental health, counseling, support systems, wraparound services in each and every one of our schools, plus the three areas I mentioned that are being done with the youth. We just had to kick off a couple weeks ago at the Springfield, Community School of Springfield, all run by youth, MLK, South End Community Center, BHN officials, Commissioner Helen Carlton-Harris. During COVID, we had a youth group there doing virtually and events when we were able to do that, on mental health issues. And this is the third leg of the stool with the school Superintendent Warwick and administration about putting really a serious look and increase on the budget. Superintendent Warwick, could you clarify before I turn it over to Principal Ali?
Thank you, Mayor. Not only having the counseling program, but the schools committee has allocated millions of dollars to have City Connects in every school. So we have those wraparound services. And as part of those services, there's partnerships with all the clinics in the city. So we tie kids into mental health counseling. So there's a lot of services available. Anyone who needs services, they simply have to go to their counseling department or their City Connects person in every school. And obviously, Friedman School has done a great job with that.
Thank you, Principal Ali. And we'll turn it back to you. Great job your whole team's doing anyways. But that last presentation hit home pertaining to the recent public speak-out we just had this evening. Thank you, Principal Ali. We'll go back to you, and sorry for the interruption.
Okay, no problem. Thank you for the recognition.
In the classrooms and amongst colleagues, in a line with portrait of the graduate, Friedman makes Equity PLC a priority. During the Equity PLCs, we have gained knowledge from art book studies, cultivating genius, and culturally responsive teaching in the brain.
We're also blessed to have low staff turnover and successfully retain highly qualified, diverse staff.
Educators prepare students to take on civic responsibility by encouraging them to participate in community-based activities during their years at Friedman. Civic engagement increases students' emotional intelligence and sense of psychosocial well-being. Participation and civic engagement help students gain valuable interpersonal skills, collaboration across diverse perspectives, and a sense of self-efficacy that positively impacts individuals, organizations, and their community.
This concludes our presentation. I thank the school committee for giving us the opportunity to just give you a synopsis of what we do. We do more than this, but this gives a brief overview of our daily activity event, our culture. We're warm, loving, respectful, and also firm environment in which the kids, they learn. And my goal as the principal is to oversee and make sure things run smoothly and to promote an environment that's conducive for my staff to feel safe and do their job, and my students to be able to feel safe in an environment to learn. And those are some of the things which make Friedman such a good school, and a school that is performing.
I know there'll be some probably questions and comments and also commending you and your team. And I think Superintendent Warwick noted, and we just got off a Chapter 74 meeting, Barb, a couple weeks ago, the last meeting at Putnam. And I know there's other schools, but you, George Johnson at Putnam here, with Principal, you, Principal Ali, even during COVID, your, where a lot of scores went down across the state, your scores went up. And just with Putnam too, and I know there's others, but those were the two recent meetings, their scores went up too during COVID. So commend you. Let me turn it over to the school committee members for any questions or comments. Ms. Gresham, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mrs. Ali, for that great presentation. And I see the passion, the dedication, the love, everything that you and your team have for the students that you do on a daily basis. And we're so proud of you and all that you are doing, your team. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Hurst, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, Principal Ali, to you and your staff. This is great data, and you can feel the warmth in the family that you all have created at Friedman. I just had a question about how many students do you have at Friedman?
As of today, we have-
Two seventy-seven.
About two seventy-seven. As you know, Springfield is a very transitional school system. So kids come, kids go. But as of today, we have two seventy-seven because we just received two new students.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any other questions or comments?
Just to follow up on both my colleagues that, thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. And as, you could actually, you can feel this presentation as an elementary school. Elementary schools are special places, and they're what really form the foundation for our children. So we appreciate the love and the education that you give to the Springfield students every day, and it's evident in your success. So thank you and the entire staff for your dedicated work to our kids.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. And that's coming from a former grammar school, elementary school principal too, Mr. Collins. Any other questions or comments?
Just wanted to thank Medina and her team for doing outstanding job, incredible work. We really appreciate you. Great job, folks.
Thank you, Principal Medina, and your team.
Thank you. And I want to thank my staff. My IOT couldn't do this without them. They're the secret sauce. They're always here, always working, on the weekends, every day. So I just want to publicly thank my staff for being there and doing the right thing. And it's all about our babies. And thank you. And thanks, Superintendent Warwick, for allowing me to have this job, that I can do my best work.
Thank you. Thank you, Principal Ali and team. We'll now, if there's any questions or comments, we'll now move to graduation dropout rate update. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to present the graduation data. As you know, the graduation data comes out this time every year. It reflects what occurred last year. So this is through 2021, 2022. So as we go through the chart, you can follow along. And we have it up there. The four-year graduation rate went up again this year to 84.6%. We started in 12, it was 56.6%. That's the biggest improvement in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You can track along how the data would look. If you didn't include the ZEP and the alternative schools, it's up to 93.5%. So most of our comprehensive high schools, the data is well over 90%, which is outstanding. And you can see how that compares to the state at 90.1%. So great growth as in all comparisons here. The five-year graduation rate, similar story, again, up to 85.6%. It was 80% last year. So that's about a 5% gain. Again, that's the biggest improvement in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts when you go down to our 59.8% in 2012. So huge gains, as you can see. And if you just, if you take out the ZEP and the alternative schools, again, way up over 90%. So very encouraging data, 94.5%. The five-year extended engagement rate, these are kids who stay engaged. They don't finish in the five years, but they're still added at the schools. We have a lot of extra programs to keep kids in place. And as you can see, we have some really good growth there too. So that's up to 89% and has moved forward tremendously over the years as well. It's actually the largest improvement in the Commonwealth since 2012. Our dropout rate on page five, you can see the graph following it down over the years. Our district dropout rate this year was 3.9%. It had some negative impact due to the pandemic. It was 1.9 last year, so we went up. But the growth from 2012 to this year is the best improvement in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So very positive data. And you can see that if you follow through the district with no ZEP and no alternative schools, 1.4%. And the data in our comprehensive high schools is all just a little over 1%, better than a lot of suburban schools. Next page, page six, you can see the four-year graduation rate. These are the kids who start in a cohort and finish in four years in Massachusetts. And you can see the, the track of the data, the data up to 84.6 from 56.6. And if you have no ZEP and no ALT, so all of our comprehensive schools, the average is 93.5%. You can see Central at 91.2, Conservatory 97.3, Putnam 95.7, Renaissance, again, very high. SciTech, I think, is noteworthy. Went from 39.9 in 2012 to 93.6. No other school in the Commonwealth experienced that kind of growth. In fact, the commissioner was at SciTech today, taking a look at the school, noting the growth they've made over the years. They're very positive about it. And you can follow it down. As you can see on the bottom, your, your alternative schools data, obviously, a lower number of students, but the, the numbers are very different. Five-year graduation rates, same track if you follow the district. We went from 80.5 to 85.6. But if you go back to 2012, we were 59.8. Now we're 85.6. So again, that's the biggest improvement in the Commonwealth. Our comprehensive schools, 94.5 if you take out ZEP and ALT. And you can see they're all in the 90s again. So very, very positive data. Five-year extended engagement rate, similar profile. We're up at 89. We started at 63. 94.5 for the comprehensive high schools. So again, very, very positive data all along. The dropout rates, you can see that we follow a pattern of going down steadily. We started at 10 in 2012. We were down to 1.9. We bumped up the 3.9 influenced by the pandemic. Not a lot of kids were dropped during the pandemic, and they were dropped last year. So that went up for a year blip. You can see the district with no ZEP and no ALT schools, they're still down at 1.4. So in our comprehensive high schools, you can see they're, they're just over 1. If you follow the track of the data, again, if you go to SciTech, you can see they started 11.6. They're down to 1.9 now. Different rates for different schools. But Commerce had a bump up again. They went up to 6.1 in the ZEP zone. And the alternatives, of course, are all at-risk kids and a small number of kids. So those numbers look different. numbers look different. If you turn to page ten, the best news of all is when you break it down by subgroup. So in the subgroup data, you have a graph that shows you in blue and then very light blue shade, 2012 and 2022 district with no ZEP. And then in the orange and gold, you see the district with no ZEP and no ALT schools. And in the dots on top, you can see, is the statewide data. So we're one of the highest poverty schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You can see how we narrowed the gap with the state. And when you take out the ZEP and the alternative schools, we're actually exceeding the state. We're ninety-three point five. Now, if you follow through to African-American Black students, you can see we're exceeding the state with no ZEP and just way over the state with no ZEP and no ALT schools. Same thing across Hispanic and Latino, starting at fifty-two point nine, up to eighty-two. But then when you go into the no ZEP and no ALT, you're up to ninety-two point three. Again, both exceeding the state. EL students, starting at forty point six, up to seventy-seven point two with no ZEP and no ALT. And you can see eighty-nine point one with no ZEP, no ALT, just seventy-seven point two with the no ZEP schools. Low-income students, same pattern. Students with disabilities, incredible growth. And you can see even exceeding the state when you take out the ZEP and the ALT schools. The five-year graduation rate trends by subgroup on the next page, same pattern. Exceeding the state for a school with the highest poverty in the state, when you take out the ZEP and the ALT schools, and actually exceeding the state with just without the ZEP schools. Extended engagement rate, you can see the same pattern and tremendous growth from 2012. And the dropout rate, you can see that, you see the data for all students, and then you can track it across, when you take out ZEP and ALT, like we said, our comprehensive schools, the average was one point four percent. The state was at two point one. And following in our subgroups, for African-American students, you can see how much under the state they are for dropout rate. You can see how much better we are for Hispanic, Latino, and the tremendous improvement. EL students started at fourteen percent, down to five point five, where the state's at seven point eight, and without the ZEP and ALT, one point seven. So clearly way better than the state, and we started really high. The next page, page fourteen, compares us to the high-poverty districts across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So if you can track it across, it shows us against the Commonwealth. And again, showing data from 2012 and 2022, so showing the gains. You can see for our overall SPS, fifty-six point six to eighty-four point six. You can see where it is with no ZEP and no ALT, and then with a no ZEP and no ALT, that they end up at ninety-three point four percent. So even with all the ZEP and ALT schools, eighty-four point six would be the best of all those districts in the four-year graduation rate. The five-year graduation rate, similar pattern. The eighty-five point six is the second best of all the schools. And the five-year extended engagement rate is the tops for all the districts like ours. Dropout rate, we're the third from the top, but if you take out the ZEP and the ALT, even the ZEP, we're right there at the top, so one point four percent. So the overall on page eighteen, SPS, the highest improvement four-year cohort graduation rate from 2012 to 2022 in the Commonwealth. Highest improvement in five-year cohort graduation rate, 2012 to 2021, because that's a year and a year, because it's five-year in the Commonwealth. Highest improvement in the five-year extended engagement rate from 2012 to 2021 in the Commonwealth. And the highest improvement in the dropout rate in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So tremendous gains made by our schools. Our staff has done an absolutely incredible job. And I'm sure now that we're in the recovery mode from the pandemic, we'll bring that dropout rate even lower yet again. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments?
I do.
Ms. Gresham, please, yes.
Superintendent, on page fifteen...
Page fifteen.
The orange color, which is state, is it comparison with the state? Because you have two, under SPS, you have two different numbers. I don't...
So we have the SPS, the first column.
Right.
That's fifty-nine, that's overall, 2012, and then 2022. So 2012 was fifty-nine point eight, 2022 was eighty-five point six.
Okay.
Then if you go to the next one, it's the district with no ZEP, it went from sixty-four point three to eighty-four point eight. And the district with no ZEP and no ALT, sixty-eight point one to ninety-four point five.
Okay. Thank you. Also on page eight, can you explain a little bit about what five-year extended engagement rate is that?
What page?
Page eight.
Page eight?
Yep.
So the five-year extended engagement rate, that's a great question. Those are kids who haven't graduated, but they've stayed in school. So they're still working towards a diploma.
Hasn't graduated.
So not everybody graduates in four or five years, especially our kids in the alternative schools, because they've changed schools several times, but they're still at it, still working towards a diploma.
Okay, hasn't graduated. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. I mean, if you, good point, Ms. Gresham. You look at our high schools, I mean, they're all majority in the nineties, mid, some high. And my alma mater really moved up Commerce now into the eighties, mid-eighties, high eighties, Duggans. So the high schools, I mean, you look at SciTech, the big recovery there, and the high school Commerce, but like the Central, Conservatory Arts, Putnam, Renaissance, Doug, I mean, strong, strong percentages and increase, just tremendous, tremendous increase. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Collins, please.
So just, so the public understands what we're talking about here. When we look at the disaggregated data and we look at our comprehensive high schools, that's what's most closely aligned with other school districts, because many other school districts do not include their alternative schools. So those are separate, those scores are separate. And so when you disaggregate that data and you look at only the schools under this committee's jurisdiction, and it's amazing, and why we're not shouting from the rooftop, that we match or exceed the state in every category of graduation. And dropout this year wasn't great, but again, the disaggregated data, we're still beating, we're still beating the state in the poorest school district in the state. I find it nothing short of astounding. Now, this is the last bit of information on our kids from last year, right? The twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We got all the testing data earlier.
Yes.
All of the data that was in that earlier report and this report, what's the source of that data?
The state.
The state.
The DESI.
DESI. This is from DESI reports, right?
This is all DESI data.
So for, if, for anyone to say that any of the reports that we receive are fake data, since it comes from just directly from DESI, is completely irresponsible. And there have been some comments made of recent that we're using fake data, and that is completely a fallacy.
Oh, this is all the state data.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Collins. And again, our district does not say no to anyone. You know, we have that alternative programs. One that's near and dear to our heart is the Drug and Alcohol High School that we have, which we take students from all across...
All across.
Western Massachusetts on it. We don't throw them away. And many have done well, you know, some it's a little tough. But in other districts, again, there are no alternatives. It's, you either survive what they have, or you're out on the street. And, you know, we don't, for whatever reason, we don't do that here. So I'm, you know, just proud that we've been able to help out many families and students.
I think it should be a point of pride for this whole committee that, since this committee's been serving, our subgroups have grown so much. The graduation rates of our subgroups have grown by leaps and bounds under this committee and this superintendent, of course. I think it's a lot for all of us to be proud of, to see the way we are focused on our subgroups in this system.
The best story was the subgroup story. The subgroup story is absolutely incredible. But, you know, our English-language learner kids, our special education kids doing better than the state with the highest poverty level. It's absolutely incredible. And our African-American kids just killing it. So it really is, really is positive.
Before I go to Ms. Hirsch, again, Mr. Collins, thank you for clarifying that. Any comments that are being made that this is fraudulent information is completely false. Again, this information comes from DESI itself confirming it. And we always look to do more and better, but for anyone or any group to say that we're making up these numbers are, well, I don't want to say what I want to say. But Ms. Hirsch, please.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I was just going to ask, because I didn't hear what the superintendent had said to Chris, but I think you, or to Mr. Collins, so I think you just clarified it. I think I was going to ask, so on the DESI website, because I haven't, in full transparency, been on the DESI website in quite some time, they published the four-year or the five-year?
They published all of these data points.
All of the data points.
All of them. These are all DESI data points.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that, Ms. Hirsch.
And these are what they use for accountability.
Say again?
They use these for accountability.
Got it.
For everybody.
Thank you. Sorry, sometimes the acoustics is a little tough here in the chamber. Yeah, we're in the penalty box here, it's like the T-birds. We don't want T-birds in the penalty box, though. We want the opponents in the penalty box. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much, Superintendent, to you, your team, the administration, teachers, staff, students, and families. We always strive to do more, but it is a good story to tell.
It speaks to the great job done by the staff. I'm very proud of them.
If there's no other questions or comments, we'll move to reports of standing committees. A is student relation, parent concerns. Ms. Gresham?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. B is Buildings Maintenance Committee. Mr. Collins?
We dealt with it early in the agenda, although we also got news that some of our other projects are moving forward.
Yes, they are. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Collins' report? Okay, hearing none. Legislative contracts and committee, Mr. Gonzalez is unavailable this evening. D is Curriculum Programs Committee. Ms. Hirsch?
No report at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. E is Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Collins?
We dealt with the issue, and we are far down their path. Just remind the public that if you want to answer the survey, please do so expeditiously so we can consider it.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any questions or comments? Mr. Collins' report? Okay, hearing none. Oh, Ms. Hirsch, I'm sorry.
Do we extend it?
I'm sorry, you're right. See, that's what happened, I lost a few days with COVID.
Okay. No, I was going to say, because if we did get extended, then it would be great for folks to know, but if it's closed...
No, my timeframe is off. I apologize. That's right, today's the sixteenth.
Thank you for clarifying that, Ms. Hirsch.
Lies when you're having fun.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments on Mr. Collins' report? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to Vocational Education Committee. Attorney Murphy's unavailable this evening. G is Technology Committee. Ms., Vice Chair Monroe Naylor, again, she, her flight was leaving, she was on virtually, so she's unavailable at this point in time. H is School Safety Committee. Ms. Gresham?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I is Diversity, Equity, Inclusion. Ms. Hirsch, please.
No report at this time.
Thank you very, very much. We will now move to Student Representative to the school committee. And again, we have a trifecta with Central High School, and from January to March, Jaleen Hernandez is representing us. If Jaleen is on, I appreciate you hanging in there, you might have to get off. But if you are there, Jaleen, and you'd like to make some comments, we're more than happy to hear from you, Jaleen. And perfectly understand, I know you hang in there at times, and sometimes things come up, but we look forward to hearing from you, or seeing you the next school committee meeting. Report of the superintendent. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a great visit to the Culinary Arts Center. Some of the school committee members were present. We got great coverage on it, but what they've done to improve that center, and again, that was a very creative way we were able to make the Culinary Center come to be. We actually used the FDA money to replace the money for the bond that the mayor put up. But the mayor put up all the money for the Culinary Center upfront and bonded for it so we could get going, and we've been able to pay it back out of FDA funds. They took a while to approve that, because no one else in the country had ever tried it before. But it's a model for the country, and what a job they're doing, and the food has improved tremendously because of the quality and the standards they have. Plus, it's allowing us to buy fresh, local, and having local folks working at the center, putting it together. But it's improved the quality line for the kids. What we did during the pandemic, I think, was amazing, feeding everybody, but of course, the quality was completely different. So that quality's going back in, the meal service is up, and really, they did a great job presenting to us. And it was great to see, it was spotless. Barb, you were there.
Yeah, I was. It was great.
The facility was spotless. It's an enormous operation, but it allows us really to provide fresh, quality food in a manner that's, it really improved things.
We just had Superintendent Warwick, again, this is first, never been done in the country, and I think they had the kids doing the cooking, the chef stuff. Jawad, Jesus, last name is, Bowlin School, he won, fifth grader, he won the cooking contest. And just to piggyback on Superintendent Warwick's comments during COVID, we served a record number, nine point two million meals, eighteen to nineteen satellite spots throughout the city. So our kids and families had breakfast, lunch, snack, and dinner, plus we did weekend packages at that point in time during the height of COVID. But many of us were there, and it's an impressive operation that they run.
It's just seeing the process, where they start and how it ends up in the classroom is just amazing. And we sampled the meatballs and the pulled pork, it was delicious. It was good.
And they really put systems in place, and we were talking about that, and Barb was talking about actually surveying the kids and getting their input to improve the meal quality, so that that's been very successful, because the kids know what they want and what they like, and they've done a great job with that. I thought it was an exceptional presentation.
And you would have seen all school committee members in hairnets and doctor's coats, too.
That's right.
So we had a...
We had a hairnet on the front.
Hairnet, so we had a few laughs, too.
We had a couple of good articles. April Mumford did a good article.
I did. I did, I did.
We also have gotten a lot of feedback on our early ed program.
Oh, yeah.
First, universal pre-K for three- and four-year olds in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. A great article by Carolyn Robbins was in the paper, I included in your package. There was also an editorial on it. But things are really promising for us, and we're working on even improving it again next year. But it's going to make a big difference for our kids, as they can get those early literacy skills and early socialization. And really, I think, in this recovery from the pandemic, it was timely and needed, but it's off to a really good start. But I think having the three new facilities enabled us to expand this over time, but I appreciate the school committee's support. Valuing pre-K.
If I may too, and I said it before at a prior school committee meeting, to Superintendent Warwick and the team, and to the school committee, school committee being the first to offer universal free pre-K, that young couple that I ran into, just a testament there saying, this is saving me nearly five thousand dollars a year for pre-K that my child, children can go to free universal pre-K. And that's four, she's nearly five thousand dollars in her pocket, pocketbook or their wallet, and she was very, very grateful of that. So kudos to Superintendent Warwick and the administration and the school committee for putting this forward.
The next piece you have in your package is the meritorious budget award from ASBO.
Mr. Mayor, one...
Yeah, oh, sorry, Ms. Gresham.
So I see we at SciTech now have preschool students?
SciTech has it as a shop, Barb, for their vocational program. So there's kids actually taking their early education pieces, their vocational program. And we have the pre-K center, so they can work right in there.
So those students were from Dorman School?
Those students probably come from, would have been at Dorman, right?
At Dorman, okay.
And we have some at Putnam, too, that are in that program.
Okay.
And I'll tell you, I was at SciTech today with the commissioner, and we were talking to the kids, and they were telling the commissioner of the programs, things they liked the most, and the opportunity to have the vocational program...
Oh, yeah.
...in their school and the after-dark programs available was very, very popular with the kids. But we have that going at... But we have that going at Dorman. There was some room set up for that at some time that we were able to repurpose for that and get going.
So they had the space for it?
Yeah, they had the space, yeah. Because we're squeezed in the elementary. We've fit in just about everything we can. But having these programs right where the kids are actually learning, so then the kids can get their, our high school kids can get experience in early childhood classes right on site. It's the same model we did at Putnam, too.
It's Back to the Future. The old days of vocational was open at night for adults. We're retraining now this night program we have. The kids are taking the program, which is great. Ms. Gresham's done. Ms. Hurst, please, I'm sorry.
Yes, I actually wanted to ask a question about that. I think it's wonderful. I wonder, though, or out of curiosity, was that purposeful because we knew that we had the trade and wanted to be able to give them that experience? Or was it that we also were, didn't necessarily have the space, or did it just happen to be serendipitous and it worked out?
No, you know, it helped us with the space, but it was purposeful relative to, that was a vogue program where there's a lot of jobs. We work with Mass Hire, and we do an audit to see where there's careers for kids. So when we propose shops to the state, they look at that, and we work with Mass Hire on that to say, okay, if we train kids in this vocational area, are there going to be jobs for those kids when they come out? And there's a lot of jobs in this early education area. So that's why we put the shops in there. Locating the kids in there, having the extra space for classes was also helpful. But it's a great opportunity for kids because they can start. In our program, they could come in perhaps as a para, go to school in the evening. We have a lot of opportunities and become a teacher. So there's a great avenue for the kids. So it's a great shop for our kids, and it's very popular.
And, Mr. Superintendent, is there any conversation or talk about that becoming like an extended summer program? Like, is there any opportunity for there to be any summer programming?
We have, we're offering summer school in all of our programs, and we're going to do it in preschool also.
And so would students be, will they still be there throughout the summer?
Yeah, we're going to do summer school programs for the preschool. We were just talking about that this week.
No, I mean, the students who are doing the trade in early childhood, will they?
Oh, for those kids to have a summer piece. I think there'd be probably even opportunities for perhaps paid positions in the summer if we needed help, yeah. So we could certainly look at that, but yeah.
We're going to continue to fortify, I know, those other districts. I know one, Amherst, is, I wish them the best. They're in the midst of laying off teachers and paraprofessionals. And we continue to expand our programs on it. And I think the more we can think out of the box unorthodox, the better with the students. So these night programs are doing, and the combination of working with other high schools together for, one school offers this, and another school offers that. It's been successful. And in trades, I just was at the state convention, there's so much need for the trades. And I hope that there could be an expansion of vocational training now. Where that was frowned upon many years ago, that is very, very hot right now to get a, you can make a great career out of it in vocational technical.
No question. And you could still, you know, go to school when you finish in a vocational school. So a lot of opportunities, very hot in the state. That's why we pursue the after dark, plus we're putting the vocational programs in our comprehensive schools. So SciTech now has the vocational programs. So does Central. We have the programs expanding to Central as well. The next one is another meritorious budget award. This is in your package. The ASBO gave our business department another meritorious budget award for last year's budget as well. So I think this might be the seventh or eighth year in a row, so I'm not sure it's news anymore. But great, great, great work by our budget team.
Congratulations.
They've absolutely done a tremendous job. I know, I know Pat's on, but Pat and his team worked tirelessly, and it made a big difference.
Congratulations, Pat Roach and team. And I know on my side with TJ, we've received it in double digits consecutive years, too, on it. So it might not sound sexy, but keeping the finances in order are important because it allows us to do those sexy projects. So congratulations.
Does Putnam need to build up a new case to hold the...
Yes, we're going to have to see. We need a new case down at Central Office for all these awards, or a new wall to put them on. A winter update on sports, our athletic teams were very successful again. Central Girls Basketball, Western Mass, 10th championship, lost to West Sussex in the round of eight. So finished the season at 21 and 4, and like I say, went far into the state tournament. Central Boys Basketball, lost in round of 16, so to North Andover, and had a very successful season. Renaissance Girls got through to Sutton in the round of 32, again, going to the state, so very positive. Putnam Boys Basketball got to the preliminary round of the states and before they were taken out. Putnam Girls Basketball also got to the states. Duggan Boys Basketball, lost in the round of 32. Commerce Girls Basketball, again, got to the state. So that's an incredible number of teams getting to the states. Now, in some of the other sports, we have the Putnam Four Wrestlers qualifying for all states, Duggan Three Wrestlers for all states, and one for all New England. Incredible. And Central, for this year, didn't have any wrestlers qualifying, and they're usually the school that has had the most success. Swimming Central, Abriana Garcia qualified for the state meet at the Central West Sectional. So our sports teams are doing well across all the different schools and all the different sectors, and Duane or Lee's done a great job with that. And the last thing I have is a contracts report that, we have the contracts report for December and January that are in your packet. So if you could take a look at those, excuse me, January and February. So they're in your packet to take a look at those, and you can call Pat or I if you have any questions. I also want to emphasize to the public that's viewing that, any student who has any social, emotional issues, any mental health issues, we have counseling and City Connect staff in every school. They're available to help them. So they just need to seek out those services. But there are services in every school, and we spent millions providing extra services, knowing they were needed. We also have the City Connect workers in those schools that can connect kids to BHN and those other clinical services agency for folks who need more intense therapy. So we have invested significantly, and those services are available. We don't want folks to be afraid to reach out and access those services.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. And just on the sports also, the Duggan complex or the Ted Plum Field construction has started.
I've seen it.
And we're looking forward to that, having a second-like central field at the Duggan Plateau there. So, but just to reiterate from all the school committee members, if a student is having social, emotional, mental health issues, there is help there. We want you to reach out, and we work with behavioral specialists, and they're in every school, every school. And we want you to be, we want you to feel well, and we want to get you the help that you need. So please, reach out. And there are also independent sources that I mentioned that youth are running, that mental health programs, working with BHN, our community centers. So if you need help, please, because we all care about you, we want you to be okay. And maybe we need to do a better job getting the information out. But there is help out there, and we want to help you. Any questions on the superintendent's?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst, yeah?
I just, if I could just also add to that, just because it might be more appropriate for me to make my comments following your, the two of you's comments rather than under unfinished or new business. I truly believe that we all genuinely and authentically want to make sure that our students have access to all the services that they may need, and in particular, those social, emotional, and mental health services. I say that as a school committee member, as a parent, as an actual clinician. And I really appreciate what both of you said, and in particular, when you said, maybe we're not necessarily doing enough. And we might think that we are, but we might not necessarily know. And so it was really great to be able to hear what those young people had to say, whether or not folks think that what they had to say was accurate, it was their truth, right?
Yeah, that's true.
And so for me, I immediately started to think about the superintendent saying, we have these services in every single school. And so I think, just like we got, we get updates on, we just got an update on Friedman and the dropout, in every meeting, we get really great updates. It would be really great to get updates on what the mental health services are in the schools and put a little extra effort in making sure that we market or publicize that at this particular school committee meeting, we are going to make sure that we report out on what exactly we are offering in our schools, and maybe even be able to present what is happening community-based wise, right, from the commissioner? And I know that that's a lift, Superintendent, and I know that your folks are working really hard and have lots of things that are on their plate. And I would just suggest that with enough timing, that we, that we ask to do that update and perhaps have something in May, which happens to be May is Children's Mental Health Month.
That's right, yeah.
So I just wanted to put that out there. And then lastly, I was just wondering if Attorney Phelps, because this was, this was new to us, this was a new situation, that we really clarify online, like what exactly, like who can speak out and what is, what are the guardrails, right? Like, we need permission from those who are under the age of 18, and in particular, because if they're going to give testimony, you know, on A, B, or C.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. I think that's important. We didn't, not that we didn't want to hear from the student, we did. We just didn't want anybody to get into a bind, saying, how, you know, could you have that person state that and something happening on it? And I think on the other outside projects that are going on, Superintendent Warwick, Molly Shay was on it. I'll have send in information on the youth group that's doing that with the community centers and BHN. The youth, Denise, good point, they might feel a little more comfortable dealing with some of their peers also at times, talking. And so, but I think that's a good idea, just to get the information out, much as we did when we did the EAP, Employee Assistance Program that we have. I don't think people realize how comprehensive that is, but...
Agreed, I think that...
Follow along. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. ...
Yeah, I was going to say, I agree, like, we did the EAP for the staff or for employees. I also started to think about when we did the town hall for, when we were in the midst of COVID, and the number of people that showed up to that. And just making sure that folks know what is available, and folks aren't having to worry about insurance, you know, sliding scale fees, stigma. Maybe they don't want to access it at school, which is why I'm suggesting, you know, what other community-based services are out there.
We had funded, I funded through the Mental Health Association funding there that if you didn't have insurance, you weren't going to be turned away. That was during the height of COVID, too. But I think the presentation, so that way we can publicize and go, here's what's in the schools, here where you can go, here's where you can go to, here's the community organizations, some which are youth-driven, that you could go to also on it. So if Ms. Hurst is done, I'll go to Mr. Collins.
I just want to applaud Denise and agree with her whole heartily. What some people don't really realize when we have speak-out is it's our job to listen. We don't go back and forth with people. And one of the things that I did get, at least it appeared to me in the listening, I think was similar to you, I don't think a lot of these, the students who spoke are aware of the myriad of different things we have available for them. I really like the idea, but I think it may be of the May meeting, but I think it may be such a significant topic, it may need more time than we would normally give it at a school committee meeting, and it may need a separate meeting where each department can say, here's the kind of offerings we, kind of like you said, the other meeting that we had during COVID, where they can, it'd be just a single topic, and people can tune in to listen and hear what that is.
I think that's a great idea, and I think that when you just said that, it also made me think about the fact that, you know, you want it to be youth and family-friendly, too, right? Like, this could seem very stuffy for some folks, and I think you want people to tune in and really hear what's out there and what's available and be really receptive to it. So I would agree, like, maybe a school committee meeting is not the venue or the actual mechanism. But I do think, I think the ultimate goal should be to ensure that folks know what's in the schools and what's in the community, because there are lots of different services that are out there.
I'm just, it's such an extensive topic, I just don't know that we could do it justice in the middle of a regular meeting.
Yep, I agree.
And maybe we could, with that youth group, that the, that's why I was asking, besides the name of schools, maybe they can, an invitation could be extended to them to go to that youth group that are dealing with mental health situations, and they put quite a campaign together. But I'll, Denise, I'll get you that information. And Helen was involved in that, too.
That'll be great, because we'll get that out there.
And Molly, get you that information, because she was one of the members of it also. But it's really driven, driven by the youth.
And we're going to work to get more information out there, so make sure folks know what's available. So I'm going to work with Azelle to get as much information out, as many venues as possible, because it's one thing having the services, but kids have to know they're available. And we'll make sure we make a connect on that. We'll put a lot of information out, on the website and at the schools and everything else.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments pertaining to the superintendent's report? Ms. Gresham?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know, Superintendent, a couple of weeks ago, according to the media, you sent staff to Puerto Rico to recruit teachers, which I think is great. But my question is, did we send any staff to the historical black colleges and universities?
We have, yeah.
When did they go, and how long were they there?
I don't have the dates, but we've gone down to the historically black colleges.
Recently?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Can you get that information for me?
Sure, absolutely.
Who went?
Yeah.
And what colleges they went to? Because, you know, we don't want our black students left out of the equation of having staff that looks like them to teach in them.
Completely agree. We'll get you that.
All right, thank you.
The other thing, if I could follow up there on what Mrs. Gresham just said, is... Well, we were leaving a subcommittee meeting, or maybe it was before a subcommittee meeting went, no, I guess we were leaving. There was a, there was a gathering in the hallway of our building, and it was with Westfield State. And it was seven, was, am I remembering correct, was it seven students?
Yeah, in the Reach to Teach program.
The Reach to Teach program, which are all minority students, mostly black, from within our district that have been recruited to Westfield State to become teachers and come back here and teach.
Oh, that's good.
And I think the more, I don't know that everybody knew about it. We just happened to be leaving a meeting, and it was there. And I think it's just such a great thing, that it get out there even more so. Maybe we can get more kids next year.
It's been, as noted in reports, school committee up across the country, it has been a challenging issue. Teachers in the ranks, minority, even teachers overall, because COVID has exacerbated the issue. But we're trying to be as aggressive as possible, not only with recruitment, but on our pay scale, too. But good points. Any other questions or comments? Superintendent's report? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to unfinished business. Hearing none, we'll go to new business. Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Motion by Ms. Hurst is her second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy absent, Mr. Gonzalez absent, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Monroe Naylor absent, Mayor Sarno.
Yes, more than sufficient vote. This matter passes. Thank you very much for watching this evening, and good health, and Happy St. Patrick's Day.